Okay, he may call in. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us. Roll call?
Gary?
Here.
Grinberg?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here. Hey, Tony, it's really sunny here and just absolutely marvelous.
Well, it's eighty-six degrees, eighty-six percent humidity and raining like you know what here.
Yeah, well, this is God's country. Just a couple of things going on. Finance had an audit in 2016, which was completed and presented by Aid Bailey last week. All the commissioners got to listen to them. The city received a clean opinion with no findings or comments on internal accounting controls. The final operational results were better than budgeted, and this entire process was completed a month earlier than last year to try to increase the way we do our budget this year. Fargo's general fund costs and taxation levels continue to be lower than comparative cities in the region, and according to a fifty-state property tax comparison study by Lincoln Institute on Land Policy and the Minnesota Center for Fiscal Excellence compared taxes paid on commercial property in 2060. Fargo was ranked fiftieth at the 1.01% because of low local government spending. So as far as we go across nationally, we're a pretty good city. We do pretty well. In comparison, Detroit and Michigan ranked first and highest with 4.09 due to low property values. If you'd like to review the city's audit and fiscal reports, they're posted on the city's website. Fire. Doggone this fire department. People still like to be part of it, huh, chief? Fire Department had forty-five candidates begin testing recently for the position of firefighter. Tony, I didn't know you had that many openings, but... The top thirty candidates will be placed on a hiring list for two years, so if the chief needs some people, that's what'll come out of that. But we've got a lot of people that want to join the department. In the last two weeks, the fire department took delivery of a rescue boat and a drone. The boat was placed into service and immediately used for search and recovery of an individual who went missing while swimming in the Red River last week. The department has six employees who have passed a certification that will allow them to fly the drone. Those six members will continue extensive training over the next few months. Commissioner Gearing has volunteered to help them if he would like. The library's annual summer reading program is off and running. Some programs include highlights of the next couple of weeks include Building a Better Magic Show about the magician Jeff Quinn, author visits by Jeff Bozinski, and news ad Riffy, Great Science for Teens, and City Hall Construction Site Tour for the kids. They get to see what's going on. Building Bonanza Construction Challenge, beginning weaving classes, and free Friday movies. So the library's got a lot of activities for the kids. The mains and hydrants department repaired a water main break last week requiring the replacement of fourteen feet of water main originally installed in 1937. The failing water main gate originally installed in about 1922 was replaced through chief water shutdown on Fourth Street South Reconstruction in the Broadway Intercept Project. So we continue to get rid of that old water main things that we've had in the past, and the guys who worked at that were still able to get the employee picnic that night, so I think they did a great job. Police. This is a great program. Downtown Resource Officer Jessica White has been commended by Chief Dave Todd for her downtown community work program. She created a program in an attempt to do something different with regular downtown offenders and address the cycle of behavior where the arrests fail to appear, fail to pay a fine, warrant, arrest, repeat, and repeat. Her program has surpassed $10,000 in fines being worked off by the participants, and several have completed their hours and remain charge-free. This program has helped building connections and relationships with individuals to start talking about treatment, housing, and making a better life choices. In this program, she's actually got some people into permanent housing. She's got them off not doing crimes, and several of them have gone into treatment program. So it's a lot better than the cycle that we've had before. Solid Waste. The all-in-one recycling bins have been delivered. I think everybody in Fargo got their bins if they wanted them. There are approximately twenty-three thousand homes participating in the program, and only three thousand opted out. That is an eighty-eight percent participation rate. And collection recycled materials will begin in early July. But you say that's a record, right? That's the highest in the community, Tony?
In comparison, Bismarck, when they rolled out theirs, had over five thousand people opt out, so Fargo's participation is really fantastic.
And for those who've got it, Commissioner Strand says they're just gonna want to get one, aren't they? Because when they see those nice blue buckets, what they can put in there.
And the new logo.
And the new logo, okay. Is there a motion to approve the Art of Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, nay, motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 5th, 2017 Regular Meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
See, just one thing on that. Is there any corrections, Tony, to the minutes last meeting? Did you want to clarify anything on your motion when we got into buys and metals and home?
I don't believe so, unless there was something that came from staff.
Jim, are you there? Gilmore? Is it okay now? We got it right? Okay, thank you. Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda? Items one through forty-four.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
So, regular agenda. Recommendations for appointments and reappointments to the following boards and commissions: Arts and Culture Commission, Board of Adjustment, Human Relations Commission, Planning Commission, and Library Board. We have a lot of new people that are gonna join our commissions, and you see Don Morgan out here, and people that have a great interest in what's going on in the community, so I'm very pleased with the people who've come forth. I appreciate all the commissioners and their input on these selections as well, but I put those forth for your approval. Can I have a motion?
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Let's see.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, construction? Is that the only one we can do?
It's your call, Mayor. That was mine.
Well, no, I'm just wondering with Julie's that open, and she's probably a public... So April, you can go ahead. This is unusual for you to get front, center, construction projects. Boy, there's a lot of stuff going on, too.
Yes, and Commissioners, I know that you received the update a little bit earlier. There are a couple of things I would like to highlight, and I... Just because I'm up early, I won't try to extend out the amount of time we're here. How about that? First, the update on safety. We're not aware of any serious injuries or fatalities since the last report that was given to you, so... Thirty-second Avenue South, there is a lot of work that remains to be done in this... on this project, but we do want to make sure that you're aware that we are... The contractor is ahead of schedule here, and it's been moving very well, so while you still see a lot of traffic control devices out there, I can't stress enough how well this project has gone to date and how quickly it is progressing. BR-17A1, the big thing to note here is that the concrete paving on the west half of the road between Nineteenth Avenue North and Sixteenth Avenue North is scheduled to begin this week, and as you can see, all utility construction has been completed on this project. BR-17B1, utility construction was started on 612, as you see there. At this point, they are pretty much waiting for force main supplies to arrive so that they can continue the installation of the force main and continue to progress. BR-17C1, following the morning rush tomorrow, Fourth Street and Second Street will close. This... The contract allows for a total of seventy days for that intersection to be closed, but it also allows one hundred and twenty-five days overall for Fourth Street, the stretch from just south of Main to Second Street, to be closed. We did include an incentive, and the incentive is $5,000 a day for up to twenty-five days on the Fourth Street portion. So if they complete Fourth Street early, there is some potential to get a little bit of money back for that contractor, so we expect them to try very hard to achieve that. BR-17H1, this project was scheduled for completion the end of July, and as you see here in this update, they're doing pretty much final work here, and we are estimating that they will complete in early July, so as much as two weeks early. So again, master construction did a great job for us here on this street reconstruction. The two projects out there for pavement management, you see Asphalt Mill and Overlay and Ware Course, these are going on in various sections of town, generally have more minor impacts to traffic as, you know, we can typically accommodate traffic flow while we're mudjacking and doing the types of things that you see here, so... Home Demo, HD-17A1, the homes that are shown in red, the addresses shown in red, have been demolished. The remaining homes, with the exception of 305 Lindenwood, we do anticipate to be relocated, so 305 is left to be demolished. The other addresses you see there, we are anticipating the contractor will be moving, so that work is progressing. Southwood Levy is continuing. Completion date here is August fifteenth. There isn't a whole lot to say on these next few. You've got all the points listed there on the slide, so... Rose Creek, that work is getting ready to begin. The first part of the work they'll be doing is relocating the recycling drop-off and some temporary parking adjacent to the Fargo Park District facility on South University, and then the continuation of the levy work through that area. BN-17H1, Tenth Street North, north of Thirty-second Avenue. The underground construction is in progress. There will be a street closure coming up with respect to Thirty-second Avenue North to take care of the water main repair that we added to this project because it was beyond the scope of what the street department was able to handle, so we coupled it with this bid to get a better price, and it will be moving forward. This is Nineteenth Avenue North. You're getting a look here at some of the graphics that Flint has worked with our department to put together to help convey the complexity of this project to the general public. In general, you're seeing the week of June nineteenth. Nineteenth Avenue North is gonna reopen between Forty-third and Forty-fifth, and then it'll be closing from I-29 to Forty-first Street. So basically, we're providing access from one direction or the other to the local properties up there, but you'll see closures throughout the remainder of Nineteenth Avenue as construction ramps up and gets going out there. The remainder of the projects are carryover projects from 2016. The one that I'm gonna note the most here is this one, FM-1493. There are three main things that I want to convey here, so the remainder of the projects are either substantially complete, that's item number one, or they have not started yet for this construction season, or number three, they might be in areas that have very little impact to the traveling public, so those won't be highlighted. I'll let you look at them at your leisure. But this particular project, we are anticipating a closure of Second Street beginning June twenty-second to take care of some warranty concrete work, and while that portion is closed, they'll also be taking advantage of that closure to grind portions of the paving further to the south. So with that, again, I'll let you look at the remainder of the projects at your own leisure unless there's any questions.
Any question by any Commissioners? Mr. Pepcorn?
Mr. Chairman, the horse park, what is the route gonna be open? That's... Their racing season is the middle of July. Do you know what the access will be like, or are they still working on that?
We are still working on those details, and we have not yet selected a contractor for that portion, so we'll work through that as we bring the contractor onboard.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you, April. Right on time. Full open public hearing, it's forty-six eight. Adams Seventh Edition, 3801, Twenty-sixth Avenue South, 3901, 4001, 4,155, Twenty-third Avenue South, and 2880, and 2852, Thunder Road South. Approval recommended by Planning Commission, 4417. Zoning change from agriculture to general commercial on Lot One, Block One, Adams Seventh Edition, on Portion to Northeast Corridor, Section Two, Township 139 North, Range 49 West of Fifth Principal Meridium. First reading of the rezoning ordinance. Explanation by Don.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Kress with the Department of Planning and Development. As the mayor stated, this is a zone change. A little background here, this is part of the Interstate Business Park Edition project. We are doing this a little differently. Usually, the plat and zone change come to you together. In this case, the zone change is coming before the plat, and you're looking at the area to be rezoned is this gray area here. This is that unplatted area that the mayor described. This is going to be rezoned from agricultural to general commercial. The area of the Adams Seventh Edition actually is already zone general commercial. Again, your commission is just acting on the zoning. This zone change is going forward ahead of the plat, so to enable one of the owners of one of the properties there, which is Border States Electric, to go forward through the building permit process and be able to have a building permit by August first to start construction of their new corporate headquarters. The rezoning, again, will be from agricultural to general commercial. That will be the entire site will then of Interstate Business Park will be zone general commercial, and that plat will be coming forward to your commission in the future. Staff has received no protests or comments regarding this zone change. Again, there's the location map there.
So anyone present who wishes to speak to this? Border States want to make a comment? How excited you are about this project?
This Tammy Miller from Border States.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's our pleasure to be here. I'm Tammy Miller, the CEO at Border States. We are one of the largest electrical wholesalers in the... in North America. We have twenty-two hundred employee owners and about four hundred and fifty in Fargo. About three hundred and fifty of them are corporate employees. We have them scattered across three different locations, and we are excited to bring everyone together under the roof of our new building at this site. Our corporate staff support ninety-five other locations in the U.S. We have eight... Ninety-five locations in eighteen states, and we do all of the backroom operations for those locations here in Fargo. They're really great jobs ranging from engineers to data scientists to CPAs, all located here in our corporate office. And Jason Seeger, one of my colleagues, is gonna say just a little bit about the new facility and what we plan to do on that site.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Jason Seeger, Senior VP at Border States. So we're planning, as Tammy mentioned, about three hundred and fifty corporate employee owners today under three facilities here in Fargo, bringing them under one facility at this new corporate headquarters location. The intent is to build, design an approximately one hundred and twenty thousand square-foot facility, and we're in the design process today. As Dennis mentioned, seeking an early permitting process to get groundbreaking started in August. Our intent is to bring employers into one roof to better serve our branches, our customers, with more flexibility, more collaboration in mind, and really serve both the community, our customers, and our vendors more effectively than we do today under three different locations across the Fargo-Moorhead area... or Fargo area, excuse me. This is designed, kind of Phase One of the project, and we're also planning for future growth, so with three hundred and fifty employee owners in the corporate offices today, and we're building this facility to house approximately five hundred and forty, with the intent being we have the ability to add a Phase Two in the future for another two hundred employee owners, so we look to support growth in the community and add more skilled jobs, as Tammy mentioned previously, so we appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It helps us out, too, because of police force, too, and we're gonna get a different building.
Commissioners, the recommendation for approval is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Is there anybody else present who wishes to speak to this? If not, we'll close public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I'll make this adjusted motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would just add that, as the timeline was mentioned by Don, that my understanding is that we need to receive and file the plat and prove the plat, and then ultimately a developer's agreement so that a permit can be issued, and I think we all have to focus our sights on that timeline, given it's June nineteenth, so that we meet the deadline by August first.
So our goal is then having digging in August?
Be wonderful.
August twenty-fourth, Tony, when you're back from Washington, make sure you're there. That'll be fantastic, because then you'll be on time for the other moves that we all talked about. Yeah, perfect, okay. Any other comment? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Congratulations. Item B, Cottage Wood Third Edition, Fifty-first Avenue South, between Thirty-eighth Street and Forty-second Street. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on 4417. Zoning change from multiple dwelling residential with planned unit development to a multiple dwelling residential. It's first reading of the rezoning ordinance, and it's a plat of the Cottage Wood Third Edition. Don, explain as well?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners, again. This is the plat and zone change for the Cottage Wood Third Edition. This was earlier platted at Amity South at Cottage Wood, a different sort of development than we usually have because it had no internal streets. It had access by easement only, and the zoning there was MR3 with a planned unit development, which was necessary to make that development work. The zoning here will extinguish that planned unit development as it is not necessary for this plat. This plat will have... This is a... I'm gonna go to the site plan, which you can see the whole thing better. This plat has thirty-nine lots that are served by a public street, and there are a number of units. There's ninety-six units overall there on those thirty-six lots, and this, as the mayor stated, has been recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Staff has received no protest to this zone change. The recommendation for approval is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. The applicant's representative, Bryant Patengale of Houston Engineering Incorporated, is with us tonight and may wish to address the commission. That concludes staff's presentation, Commissioners. Thank you.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this new platting?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Bryant Patengale with Houston Engineering. Just real briefly, essentially, we just are replating the existing plat from a change of ownership to a new sort of development. It's intended to be a rental... rental development with townhome styles attached townshome styles, which was shown on that layout. We're providing that public street to accommodate access to the individual buildings and the utility services. We really think this is... Working with staff very well on the development to help replat this, and they've been very helpful on the whole way on this. Do you have any questions?
What do you anticipate on these townhomes' value pricing when people want to get into them? Do you have any idea of the price range?
I do not know. Heather Morris may be able to answer that with the draw.
Good afternoon. I'm Heather Morris, and I represent J&amp;L Leasing. We plan to do... There's ninety-one units, and we plan to do several different designs with roof changes and so forth so that it's not looking all the same, and we plan to offer three different types, anywhere from a standard, which would probably run around $1,400 per month to rent, to a luxury unit that would have master suites, fireplaces, those type of things that could run up to $1,800. We haven't had the exact rent yet decided, but those were... Our plan to offer three different levels of rental units.
And it's not particular any age group? It's not an over fifty-five? It's anybody could rent?
Right, anybody, yes.
Any other... Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Was rental the only option, or had you explored these houses to be owner-occupied residents by chance, or...
When the...
Just curious about that.
Yes, when the J&amp;L Leasing owners decided to purchase it, it was only to look at rentals. Prior to, it was looked at as a, I believe, a ownership community with maybe a association and so forth, and that didn't work out for that developer, and that's why he looked to sell it, and our owners decided to do it with a rental property in mind.
One thing... One thing to add with that, there is actually a unique feature on this is that we're using the attached housing development standards for portions of the lot, which are like thirty of the lots, if I remember right about that, which allows conversion actually to single-family ownership at some point in the future if they so choose to. It's more of like an attached townhome, so they have front garages, basically fronting the street, so it's very like a... Instead of like a two-unit twin home, we'd basically be like a four- to five-unit twin home, and those are all on their own individual lots, and the way they're served with utilities would allow them for conversion at some point in the future should the ownership decide that they want to convert that to single-family ownership. So it would be sort of a mixed development, potentially.
Very good. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this project? Close public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion by the commission? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kress, maybe you could explain the dissenting vote in the Planning Commission? What was the nature of that? Do you know?
Sir, I honestly do not recall the... I don't know if there was comment on that, sir.
Jim, do you know?
No, sir, I believe there just one Commissioner voted no. I don't recall that the Commissioner commented.
Any other discussion?
Indicated in the staff report there.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item C, Changes to the Mapbus Routes 13, 15, 16, 17, 18, 21, 22, 23, and addition of Route 24. It was continued from 6517 Regular Meeting. You're not Julie.
I'm not. She does apologize for not being here. She is actually at the West Fargo City Commission, because we're also presenting there tonight, and I had a couple contracts, so we had switched last minute. So we do apologize for that. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. With the route changes, these are all part of our transit development plan recommendations is where these came out of. With transit, we are required to do a TDP or a Transit Development Plan every five years. The last one just concluded this past year, and with that came several different changes that we... that were recommended to improve the Mapbus system. With this current writing under the public hearing, we did add 13U and Route 14 as well. Route 14, due to the construction on Thirty-second Avenue, which was spoke about earlier today, that will actually require a reconfiguration of the Route 14 route where the apartment loop is on Thirty-second Avenue between Thirty-second Street and Thirty-third Street, so that was added as well. With the recommendations, Route 13 would be changed to service the U-32 apartment complex up on Thirty-second Avenue North in Fargo. It's a small change to go in. Roar's Construction has been building that and has asked that we service that high likelihood of college students that will be up there. 13U, we would be removing the evening service that currently operates year-round. It's two and a half hours that we operate that route from 6:15 at night to 11:15 PM. That was a route that was given to... or added so that we would have fifteen-minute service up on NDSU campus. We're looking to remove those two and a half hours on that particular route. With Route 15, the recommendation that came through was to remove the second pass through the West Acres parking lot. Currently, with Route 15, we service West Acres, continue on to Walmart, and back to West Acres again. In order to improve timing, they had recommended... Our consultants recommended that we would remove that second West Acres stop. 16 is currently a ninety-minute route. It's a very long route. It goes through Fargo and into West Fargo. They had recommended that we split that route into two routes, making Route 16 a sixty-minute or an hour-long route, and then the second portion that actually services West Fargo would become Route 22. So one route, ninety minutes, chop it in two routes, Route 16 being an hour and Route 22 being a thirty-minute route. Route 17, we're looking at extending service on that. It currently operates on a thirty-minute route, operates once per hour, and currently ends service at 8:15 PM. We'd be looking to extend service from 8:15 to 10:00 PM on that route. We'll be looking to extend service from eight fifteen to ten PM on that route. Route twenty-one would be a newly created route. That route would service, it would hub out of the West Acres Mall area. It would service the parole and probation offices, along with the Somali New Business Center and the Girls Dormitory for Center Incorporated. We already discussed twenty-two. Route twenty-three is currently a low-performing route that hubs out of West Acres right now. It services West Acres along the Forty-fifth Street corridor down to Microsoft, the Osga Department Loop area, and to Walmart on Fifty-second. That route would actually be combined with Route eighteen. That's, I skipped Route eighteen a little bit ago. What they're looking at currently is taking Route eighteen, which is a thirty-minute route, making it into a ninety-minute route, so that someone would be able to get on our bus at the Ground Transportation Center in downtown Fargo and get all the way out to the Fifty-second Avenue Walmart. So we're kind of taking the best parts of both of those routes and combining them. And then Route twenty-four would be the new route, which was approved during last year's budget cycle to start July first of twenty-seventeen, and that would service the New Sanford Medical Center, along with Costco, Eagle Run area, and Shields Arena. With that, those are all the changes. I do have maps, if you guys would like to see of our existing routes, and then in your packet is a map of all of the proposed changes that we're looking at. Would like to add a note on that with Route fifteen, we did receive a few comments on that. People are not in favor of us removing the second West Far, or West Acres portion of that route, and so we would, at this time, withdraw that from here and we would maintain Route fifteen on its current path. We would not pursue that. The same with the Route eighteen servicing out of GTC all the way down to the Fifty-second Avenue. There is a portion of that route on Ninth Avenue that we would no longer be servicing, and some of the concerns that came in were that we were not servicing that corridor anymore. And so we would alter that route to service on the outbound trip, the Ninth Avenue from University to Twenty-Fifth Street, and then on Fifth Avenue from Twenty-Fifth back to University. So those would be the two changes that we would ask for right now.
So now, if you're in the city of Fargo and you want to get somewhere, you, don't you have an app in which somebody can figure this out?
We do. We have a map bus app that has live tracking on all of our buses. You can download it on any Apple phone or Android phone. All of our routes are updated on there, and really all we're doing here is looking at increasing the service area with the same funds that we have. These changes are all cost-neutral, with the exception of Route twenty-four.
Isn't West Fargo helping you with the Sanford route?
Yes, that's actually why Julie is at the West Fargo Commission today, is they'll be paying a portion of the West Fargo route. The TDP, or the Transit Development Plan, sorry, we're used to acronyms. The Transit Development Plan recommended two separate routes, one to service the New Sanford Medical Facility, and another to service that portion of West Fargo. However, with our current inventory and our fleet size, it wasn't possible for us to do that, and so we combined those two recommendations into one hour-long route to be able to service the Sanford Medical Center and that West Fargo portion. So they will be helping pay for that Route twenty-four piece.
Very good. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to all the route changes we're having here Question is, were the rates increased?
At this time, we're not proposing any fare increases.
Just for the public, could you repeat the question so the public-
Oh, sure. For the removal of the second West Acres stop on Route fifteen, how many people would be left in limbo and have to wait, I believe was your question? Currently, Monday through Friday, Route fifteen operates every fifteen minutes, so there would never be anyone at any bus stop along Route fifteen that would have to wait longer than fifteen minutes for a pickup, Monday through Friday. On Saturdays, it would be thirty minutes, because we operate Route fifteen every thirty minutes. That is the, one of our most frequent routes that we operate, that has the highest ridership and the best frequency throughout the city. The change, however, would affect a portion closest to the Shields Sports Store on Forty-fifth Street, and that change is a, an area that we feel we still need to service, because we do have quite a bit of ridership there, and by putting all of these changes into effect, we would leave a hole in our system. And that's why we're not recommending moving forward with the Route fifteen portion at this time. I'm sorry? The fare? Nope, there will be no increased fare at this time, we're not proposing anything like that. This is only for route changes based on the recommendations of our plan.
Closed public hearing, do I have a motion?
I'd move to approve the changes as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Tony, is there change in cost for everything on this? Aren't you saying this is neutral?
There was only one change in cost, as an addition, was it twenty-four?
That's correct, yeah, Route twenty-four, and that was budgeted for last year.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Gary?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
I think we're done with public hearings and we go to item forty-eight. Update and discussion of current general fund revenues through May thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Director Ken Costin to explain.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Grinberg had asked for this to be placed on the agenda tonight, so we're fulfilling his request. Wanted to give you just a brief overview of what's been happening in the last couple of weeks. You're obviously aware that we closed out the year. We had a good year last year, a couple hundred thousand dollar net income to the general fund, as opposed to a couple of million dollars that we anticipated we probably would have lost last year. So weather conditions are favorable, management oversight of the expenditures was favorable, and net-net, we, we came into about, on our revenue projections last year, within about one-tenth of one percent. We were spot-on with regard to our revenue projection, and why that's significant is that's a little tighter than it normally would be. Typically would have a two and sometimes three percent revenue surplus or positive variance. So that kind of leads our way into that. You were visited with the audit staff last week and were filled in on last year, so I think the gist of what Commissioner Grinberg asked was to, how are we doing in the present year, two thousand seventeen? And I did include a report, this is a standard report that's issued every month to you, hopefully you're looking at it and jotting notes where appropriate. What I wanted to say is, on this particular report, through May, this is through May, actually through June is probably a little better snapshot, because that's the exact midpoint of our fiscal year, but through May, we were at ninety-nine percent of our revenue projection. And all in all, I would say we're feeling pretty good about our components of revenue. We have a lot of revenue lines in the general fund, I think we're tracking over two-hundred lines of individual revenue units that roll up into this very high-level report that you see in front of you here. I did want to make a couple of comments with regard to the trend, if you will, current year. I think overall, we're feeling good about where we'll end the year with regard to revenues. Couple of things we've been watching very closely is the intergovernmental revenue, the money we get from the state. Last year, we reduced that very significantly, I think we reduced it to four million dollars or so, and that was fairly close to what actually came in. Now, we only get our state aid, we get four payments per year, and they're fairly sizable payments, we budget about one-point-six million dollars for each of the payments. The very first payment that came in in January was about twenty percent less than what we had budgeted. But the good news is, if we dig in a little bit to some of the details of what the state is reporting, Office of Management and Budget, as you recall in the legislative forecast, they reduced their revenue projections two or three times during the legislative process. But since that last benchmark, I was able to discern that in April, the month of April, their sales tax collections were twenty percent ahead of the legislative forecast. I think that's a fairly significant indicator, A, because it went up higher than the state revenue forecasts, and that's a, that's a good indicator. Evidently, rig counts are starting to go up, there's more economic activity in the western part of the state, and you're seeing signs of that. Another sign that that is heating up a bit is our, our state aid that comes from gas tax and vehicle registrations, that also has increased recently as well, so.
So Ken, for the public who can't see this report, you said that the sales tax forecast was forty-four million, four-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, and the actual sales tax was fifty-six million, six-hundred thousand. So that is twenty percent higher than anticipated, which actually also will probably change our local sales tax as well?
Not necessarily. I had shared that slide, I think probably just with the mayor, that was a state indicator and what he just read was accurate. That was a snapshot for the month of, of April. And our local sales tax ended last year with a point-two percent increase in overall sales tax. That was fairly low by historical standards. Typically, we would be three to five percent, somewhere in that neighborhood. For the first four months of the year, we were actually down about nine percent on sales tax, our local, city of Fargo sales tax, and I just fished out, for, that's not an accounting term, by the way. I just looked at the state website, and on the twenty-first, we'll be getting another payment for our sales tax. That went up significantly, that went up from about three-point-two million dollars to about four-point-five million dollars. Haven't had time to discern what caused that, but I think it's evidence that, you know, more economic activity is happening. With regard to license and permits and such, we had record years over the last couple of years, somewhere around five-hundred million dollars in construction, commercial and residential construction. Jim Gilmore has surprised me that he expects that number to be somewhat lighter this year, maybe around four-hundred million. There is a significant amount of, of development, pent-up reviews to be done in planning and such, so he thinks that maybe another one-hundred-and-fifty million of construction on top of what we already have. And then also, with regard to the charge for services, it's a larger component on this line item. We have a robust capital improvement plan that you approved last year, it's about one-hundred-and-eighteen million, and we think we're on our revenue targets with regard to development fee-type revenue. Interest rates are also increasing, Fed just raised interest rates last week, that was anticipated, and what that does is helps our bottom line on the investment side when we have our cash reserves invested. So we've reached out to our investment advisors and had discussions with regard to what we can expect for the rest of this year and then going into next year. So we are watching that carefully. Also, with regard to transfers in, this number is typically, transfers that come from the utility funds, and there was some new revenue that came through there with, as a result of the West Fargo Water Service Contract last year, and we've recently been working on that wastewater contract with West Fargo and Horace as well, so. So, bottom line, there's two or three lines we're watching carefully, and we hope that it doesn't slip, and there's other revenue lines that are increasing, albeit not at a, at a horrid pace, but we expect to end the year fairly close to our revenue projection, and I don't believe that we'll be making any wild swings or wild adjustments at mid-year like we did last year where we lowered the state aid considerably. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and if you had more discussion.
Mr. Pepcorn?
Kent, the, first of all, the, I Bailey was very complimentary of you and your staff, so if you wouldn't mind mentioning the, your staff members, I think that'd be good.
Absolutely, I was hoping maybe the mayor would do that at the kickoff, but anyway, I, I would-
I'd sent them all notices, but I'll allow you to-
Yeah, and I just want to tell you, I think our finance team, the team that we have together is top-notch. They're hard-working, they're very good with their customer service, both internal and external, and I know the department heads that need help with budget and number crunching and others, we literally drop what we do and to try to help them along the way, so. But anyway, Jenica Flanagan, Jamie Bullock, Jessica Hoym, and Megan Zaratka are on our finance team, and Steve, and the other side of the office as well, Sherry Colkins and the whole group that does the accounts receivable, accounts payable. It truly is a team effort to close the year better than what you thought, and also, kudos to the department heads, because on the expense side of the ledger last year, most all of the departments came in under budget, which is great.
Just a couple more things, Mr. Chair. The, usually, when you do an audit, they have some recommendations of changes, that's almost standard, and they had none, and so that, that tells me that you're doing an excellent job of being on top of current changes and things like that, so you also deserve credit, Kent. The other thing I want, if you don't mind talking a little bit about, the, the new revenues for the water and wastewater is fantastic, but they are restricted. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Presently, in North Dakota Century Code on the waters operations, there's a restriction of only twenty percent of that revenue can be transferred to the general fund. The lawmakers at the time, they set that, probably felt it was reasonable to transfer a certain amount of revenue out of the utility, but they did cap it at twenty percent. On the wastewater side, ironically, wastewater isn't really described as a utility, but there is no cap on your wastewater revenues, so that would be at the discretion of, of the budget team and the commission as far as how they want to handle that wastewater revenue. The, the other part that's also capped at twenty percent is solid waste, so those are statutory compliance-type things that we can't exceed when we start building our budget together. So even though there's a lot of extra money flowing into there, a good share of it has to stay in there to support the operations of water and wastewater.
Thank you.
Mr. Gary?
Yeah, and just to that point, the twenty percent that you're talking about, you know, we try to meet that every year, but it's a stretch to get there, it's a lot of money with that large of a budget to do that. So while it is restricted, it's a lot more when you add millions and millions of dollars with West Fargo and Horace coming in, so the good news is sewer is not limited, and that's going to be the biggest increase that we see next year and the year after that for, for utilities.
Good work. Commissioner Grinberg, do you have any comments on this particular issue?
I appreciate Kent providing the presentation and along the lines of Commissioner Pepcorn's comments. You know, we all individually met with I Bailey and we have a strong, positive outcomes with the audit, we have a great staff. I was a little concerned about what was going on economically across the state and with the state aid distribution fund, and so as we manage this through the end of this year, knowing that our budget process is starting, I just felt it would be good to have us all hearing the same message at the same time at a, at a city commission meeting about, you know, how we're tracking our revenues and expenses, so. So I just appreciate that being added to the agenda and council review, because I think it's, it's important for the public to know, because often in busyness, we don't have a chance to talk about it.
Very good. Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. Mr. Costin, I'm just curious about the interest rate topic you raised, and you, you connected it to the revenue side of, of some gains with interest rates climbing, but on the other side of that teeter-totter are, are bonds and our, our abilities to refinance bonds, or whether we will or not, if the interest rates will rise. Do you have a sense of how that's going to be looking into the short-term and long-term with, with the bonds and if, and I'm not sure how many bonds we're expecting to, you know, to be going forward with that are new, or refinancing of older bonds?
Yeah, the, the good news is, interest either works for you or it works against you, and in the case of the investment side, it's certainly working for us, it's going to help accentuate our revenues. On the expense side, our long-term financing certainly will go up. We pushed hard to get the parking revenue bonds issued last year, we pushed hard to get the city hall revenue bonds issued last year because we knew that interest rates were going up. So the ones that we have in the hopper right now, bond issues that are pending is the one for Block Nine, and that's coming very soon, and then also just our standard special assessment bond, and that maybe would perhaps go up a half a percent, somewhere in the neighborhood of three-point-eight to maybe four percent. So you have seen special assessment bonds as low as about two-eighty, two-eighty-five, somewhere in there, that was at the bottom of the trough, so to speak, so they are reverting back, you know, and will continue to rise according to what the economic analysts are predicting.
If I might continue, do you have a sense of this slowing down our abilities, or is there a point where we really are slowed down in refinancing bonds already in place?
Well, and we do have an aggressive plan to do that, and we've done many. As the rates go up, you certainly lose that opportunity, and typically, you just have to be patient and kind of wait it out, because these are twenty-five-year bonds, and I'm not suggesting that interest rates are going to immediately go back down to these previous levels. They're very low, and we probably won't see them again for quite some time.
Thank you.
So the state struggled as legislative body to try to figure out when the bottom had hit, are you suggesting from the report from the state at this time, the bottom may have hit and we may be going back up, or?
Well, that's a great question, Mayor. All I can say is that the state, in their revenue forecast in March, they said that late seventeen, early eighteen, you would start to see an increase in economic activity, and if one point doesn't make a trend, but we've seen evidence of that just in the last month or two on our sales tax receipts, our state highway funds and, and those types of things. So again, the state had said they did predict some recovery, but the key issue is when will that recovery happen and what's the impact to Fargo?
So with border states expanding, should I tell everybody to go out and buy electric supplies? Wouldn't that help us locally?
You can spread the good word as much as you- You can spread the good word as much as you feel.
Is there any other business? Mr. Strand?
This is the very important stuff. You know, next Wednesday, we all need to be thinking of our mayor as he celebrates his birthday, the twenty-eighth of June, so.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
It wasn't as hard as going back to my fiftieth class reunion for high school, so very interesting. Thank you. Is there a motion adjourned?
I'd so moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.